Not seeing any, so we'll move on. To next, which is announcements and presentations. First item, A, receive COVID-19 update from Kaiser Permanente from our facility in South San Francisco. And we have our speaker, who obviously is from the South San Francisco Medical Center, and doctor, I will turn it over to you.
Great, hi, this is John Scarry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, and I wish you could see me. I apologize, somehow my camera is not working. But we will proceed. So first, I want to thank you all for inviting me to give an update on COVID. It's a testament to the changing fortunes of this pandemic that when I was first invited back in July to give an update, it was about potentially with a focus on how we could travel safely in the vaccination era. And of course, this summer has gone a little differently from what most people anticipated. The the Delta variant had its own mind about what was going to happen. And so this has been a challenging summer for everyone, including those of us in healthcare. But what I'd like to present as an update is I come to you with a message of gratitude and hope, actually. Yes, we are tired, this has been a difficult summer. But I think there's a lot to be thankful for and a lot to look forward to. First is because while we are in our fourth surge, there are strong indications that we are coming to the end of our fourth surge in the Bay Area, and in particular in San Mateo County. And the reason why I'm so grateful is because despite the challenges of the last few months, in the last 18 months of the pandemic, we have come through this fourth surge probably better than most areas of the rest of the country. And that is thanks to all of you. If you've been paying attention, and I assume you have, to the San Mateo Department of Public Health website, you will see that over 90% of the population in San Mateo County has had at least one dose of a vaccine. And that has made all the difference in this particular surge. I'm proud that Kaiser Permanente has played a large role in distributing that vaccine. We've distributed more vaccine than anyone else in the county between South San Francisco and Redwood City. I would also say in the next breath that it has taken a village to get that done. Over 200 organizations in San Mateo have distributed vaccine since the start of our efforts back in December. And as a result, we have weathered this surge probably better than anywhere else. I would say maybe even in the country, okay? And I think we're pointing the way towards where we can go in the future. Because while we are obviously come into grips with the fact that we might not have COVID behind us, and we might be living with COVID for a while, I think the Bay Area and San Mateo County and Northern San Mateo present an example of how we can successfully live with COVID. All that good news aside, what I would say is we still have our challenges with vaccines. While again, over 90% of the population over the age of 12 has had a vaccine, we still have the kids under age 12 who are still yet to be vaccinated. And in some of our more vulnerable groups, particularly Black and Latinx populations, the uptake of vaccine has not been as high as we would like. Again, we have been doing huge efforts both within KP and throughout the community to try to provide education for folks, reassurance for folks, and trying to meet folks where they are. And that effort continues, and we slowly continue to make progress, but we're not done. If it was just vaccines, that might be enough, but in fact, I think our community has been on board with many of the other measures that were asked folks to do as well. Including masking indoors, including keeping activities outdoors when we can, including avoiding large gatherings indoors, and in trying to find better ventilated spots when we do need to meet indoors. So we still have a lot of uncertainty going forward. We don't know what's going to happen with kids going back to school, whether that may precipitate more transmission. We don't know what's going to happen with the flu season. We are also struggling with the deferred care that's been put off as a result of the pandemic. And we're also addressing the idea of the, as we learn more about COVID, our messages to the public continually change. And I would ask your, and beg your patience, that those messages will continue to change. And please bear with us. But all that said, I'm incredibly grateful that I live in the community that I do because of the trust that we have in our leaders, our political leaders, the trust we have in our medical system, and the trust we have in each other. Because I think as a result of that, we are doing much better than in many other areas of the country where this latest surge really has reached crisis proportions. And I think we are pointing the way to where the rest of the country can go. They had the one slide, and what I just want to emphasize is yes, we are still offering vaccination on a daily basis in Kaiser Permanente in South San Francisco and Redwood City. Yes, we are still doing testing every day. And we are preparing for our flu vaccination efforts to start on September 20th. So while we still face uncertainty, again, I think we have a lot to be grateful for and a lot to be hopeful about. I tried to keep it brief, and so I imagine there are other questions, so I would gladly take them now.
Doctor, thank you for your updating your comments. Is there any questions from my colleagues? Not seeing any questions at this time from folks. Doctor, do you want to thank you for your time? Thank you to Kaiser. When I see some of the reports, I see that Kaiser has really been a leader when it comes to getting the vaccinations out and assisting in the community. So thank you to you, all the staff, and those around the front lines. Our council and community are appreciative of what you have been doing and what you are continuing to do for all of us. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
With that, we will move on to item B. Receive presentation and annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee. And I believe we will be going to conference room 115. And I believe we have our chair that will be giving our report. City Hall?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all, I'm going to give the report to 2020. Next one, please. Yeah, we are an all-volunteer group, as you know, and we promote emergency preparedness planning and education for residents of San Bruno to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and magnetic disasters. In 2020, our members were as shown, Malcolm was the chair, I was vice chair, Jerk LaFonis, Rob LaVettis, and we picked up a new member in 2020, Sedan Millie. City Council liaison was Michael Salazar. Just throwing this in here, we, our members are the same for 2021. And we, our liaison from the city council is now Linda Mason. Our city staff is Ari Delay, the fire chief, Gage Slice, the Italian fire chief, Scott Rogie, police officer. And our ex-official members are Walt Long, the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club, and Doug Cunns, who represents the Red Cross. Excuse me, we put these in so I can show you what we normally do in a non-pandemic year. We go to all sorts of functions, community day at the park, police day at Tanforan, fire station of the house, and all of those different places. We have a table with all kinds of good FEMA information. We have CERT information, and we even have assignment sheets for people that are interested in taking the CERT classes. And then we pass that information over to the fire department. At the fire station of the house, we had a table there hanging out, some of the same information. In addition to that, we have, we had something called a go-bag, which is the emergency kit you grab when you've got five minutes to evacuate your house. And we, we had samples of the kits there. The kits can be commercially bought, or you can make your own. I prefer to make my own and tailor it to my own needs. Post-COVID events, you can see it's a very short list. We still have our monthly meetings, but now they are Zoom. There were no public safety events spelled in 2020, and none are planned for 2021. We were hoping for the Paramus Day at San Mateo Event Center, but that's been canceled. So what we can do is have monthly PSA topics and put on the fire department website, and channel one, that shows on there too. And we, that's available at ready.gov/calendar. There's different topics for every calendar month. And it changes fire safety, all sorts of different things. So that's what we've been looking to do. The only city funds that we have are the use of a copier, which the fire department is graciously, so we can hand out flyers and so forth. We are all indeed volunteers. We have lots of materials from OES, Sheriff's Department, and FEMA. FEMA has a lot of good information out. And then we have samples of go-bags. And in every CERT class, we, our radio club would come and give a short talk about the value of a ham radio for emergency communications. Next slide. There were no in-person or Zoom CERT classes in 2020 and 2021, so we have not done any radio training. Disappointing. Okay, one of the groups affiliated with our club, our committee, is the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club. And this club has been more active, or as active now during COVID as it was pre-COVID, because if you're talking on a radio, everybody's in their house and they're talking on a radio. You can't get more socially distanced than that. So we don't need, we don't need to meet in person. We do have monthly a Zoom meeting now, which we had last night. And we covered various subjects. The nice thing about the amateur radio club, it's, it's set up primarily for emergency communications when there is no power, no internet, no cell service. Amateur radio can always get through. And our, most of our members have stationed in their homes, and we all have mobile equipment as well, so we don't have to stay in our homes. We can travel all over the, all over the city of San Bruno and still get out emergency communications. Let's see, we have a weekly net. And the net is just like a get-together on the radio. And we have, every net is primarily an emergency drill. We operate in three different frequencies. If the first two frequencies that are repeaters, if they're down and not operating, we can operate simplex, which is basically radio to radio, line of sight. When we go all around the city of San Bruno, which as you know, is full of gullies and canyons and so forth, it can be hard to get your radio signal through. So we have mapped out citywide the good places that will give the best communications, the best radio propagation in the city. So, let's see. Okay. This is a picture of some of the things we did pre-COVID. The one on the lower right was Kevin Mullins' Health and Safety Fair at Tanforan, which was canceled this year. But as you can see, we had a table, we've got CERT information, we've got SMC alert information, lots of emergency preparedness information. FEMA is really good about printing up all sorts of things, and we, as people go by, we reach out and say, are you prepared for an emergency? Are you ready for the earthquake and so forth? And we get them engaged in conversation and leaflets to them and try to get them to sign up for a CERT class. Here's some of the things that we're telling. And as far as SMC alert goes, a lot of people around town are still not signed up for this and have no knowledge of it. So as I'm standing in line at Lucky's, I'm talking to the checker, and I said, have you ever heard of SMC alert? And he said, no, what is that? And I go, it's, my first thing out of my mouth is, it's a free thing, no cost, sign up and you get emergency notifications of fires, explosions, road closures, water breaks, water main breaks, all sorts, and active shooters, all the sorts of things that you need to know before you set out in your car. So anyway, the go-bag is one of my favorite favorite things, because if you only have five minutes to leave your house and get out before the fire hits you, you have to have that go-bag packed with things that you're going to need for at least a week. So this is a list, batteries. And another thing that people don't always think about is all the documents that you have that are very important. Your auto registration, your auto insurance, your homeowners insurance. Nobody knows all 16 digits of their credit card. I never did. So you can make copies of that either on a flash drive or make them paper copies and have all of that in your go-bag ready to go. And also, if the power's out, the ATMs will not be working. So you should have a small supply, a, excuse me, a supply of small builds so that you can buy things. Always keep your gas tank in your car. Never let it go below half a tank, keep it always filled, because if the power goes out, the gas stations are not working either. So just the two things to be cognizant of. And knowing where nearby AEDs are located is good, because we went, those of you that are trained to use those, it's good to know where they are, and most public buildings have those. But I'd also like to mention that three of the members of our committee are amateur radio operators, as well under the club, and we are also CERT qualified. So we try to take great pride in that. So that's it, any questions?
I do see we have a member of the public that has their hand up. If they could be brought in, if it's okay with council, bring that. And first, then I'll turn it to the council, we'll go to the vice mayor. Please.
Ray Glassner, and you should be able to unmute. Are you good, Ray?
So I just wanted to reiterate something she said. Ham radio is a very old technology. When I was growing up, when I was like a pre-teen, our neighbor was a ham operator. But ham radio is very, very important when we have the next major emergency, which we will. It'll be an earthquake, it'll be flooding, whatever it will be. But I think sometimes people look at ham as kind of this old obsolete technology. But it's really, really important, and I support them a lot. And although I don't have a license, I am a member of the club.
Yes, I recognize your voice. You've been in some of our meetings, good to see you on tonight. Yeah, as far as, several years ago, when some of the really bad fires were going on up in the North Bay, excuse me, no cell towers. Some of the towers had actually burned down. There was no internet, there was no telephone, there was no communications, period, at all. And the only communication there was, was mobile amateur radios. And like I said, most of our members have mobile capability. We have an antenna, an antenna clasp on the top of our car. Go anywhere and you can still provide emergency communication. So it's very important, that's why we, in every CERT class, in every CERT course, we pick a class and give a little spiel about the importance of ham radio. It's much easier to get a license now than it ever was, you're not required to learn more codes. So a lot of people find that very helpful.
Thank you for your comments, the next person, please.
That's Dave Dornlist, Dave, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dave Dornlist, KN6KOO, a member of the ham club. I've been watching, attending the committee's meetings, and I have to say that I think Janet in her leadership is doing a very good job with the support of the police department and the fire department. I commend them for doing a good job. I think it's tough with the limited resources they have. And one of the things that I know it's a topic to them, and I think I'm going to bring it up because they might not. And that's their ability to deal with social media. Apparently, there are restrictions that would help them get out to the community. And the community, getting out to the community is a very important situation. It's good to be on the fire website. Because we're the ham club, we can do what we want, basically. For instance, we had a meeting, and I'll give credit to Janet last night, we did it on go-bags. And I was able to publicize it on Nextdoor and in a way that we wanted to get it done. We got 17 people there. Not a huge crowd, but it's a little bit of reach, I don't know how they do it. But Janet, that's one of her favorite topics, and she led the discussion. And it's a shame not more people saw it. Another meeting we had, we actually had 46 people attended. We had another program that I'm involved with and have been speaking to your fire chief about. And that's ARDAN, which is a, we call it the disaster internet. It's a, it's a radio frequency communication system that we're trying to push into San Mateo County and then connect up to the EOCs. We think it's very important. We're all, it's an amateur movement, but we think it's important to them. We had 46 people at that meeting, and the head of the group, Greg Allerback, we posted his speech, 460 people have listened to it. I would advise you maybe to listen to it, because it's something that we want to do as a public service. But once, last thing I want to mention, once again, is Janet and the committee do a very nice job. And they should commend her for their work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dornlist, for that information, appreciate it. Seeing no other hands from the public, we'll turn it to council for questions or comments, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you're, you all do. I have a couple of questions. The first one being is, have you seen an increase in the attendance of your meetings? Being that they are now, or they have been on for a while on Zoom? I recall as a liaison, we rarely got people to come to these meetings. My second question is, do we have any updated data on SMC alert? What percentage of our residents are enrolled?
We can turn that over to the chair or fire department staff, whichever is best. But first one was the attendance, are we seeing a, an increase from our pre-COVID to today?
We are, for our meetings, yes, because it's available by Zoom, and I think people are more apt to tune in on Zoom than they are to actually, because we used to hold them in the basement of the EOC. So I think just a few more people are, of course, there's a lot of people that have more to worry about right now than our meetings, unfortunately, they're, they're trying to get work, they're trying to juggle family and everything else, so. But I think it is easier for them to check into our meetings. As far as SMC alert, you mean this? Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't have any data on how many people have actually signed up.
Honorable Mayor, Ari Delay, your fire chief.
Please, Chief.
Sure, we, we have been working with San Bruno PD and had launched a campaign to increase the participation in SMC alert. And that just happened a month or so ago, so we'll be looking to get some metrics on that and how, how much our, our participation goes in in SMC alert. And just remember, SMC alert is an opt-in system, so that's an important thing to kind of remember for us, it's an opt-in system. And we do have other avenues to get information out, but that is a great one for routine, day-to-day emergencies, if there's any such thing.
Excellent. And one last comment, Mr. Mayor, would be my support in finding ways to increase the social media outlets that these boards and commissions that could post and to provide more information to the public. I think I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Not seeing any at this time, council member Hamilton.
Very quickly, just want to say thank you to the, to the members of the committee for all the good work that they do. Especially through, through COVID and all the difficulties. We very much appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Janet, Madam Chair, if you would, please convey to the team and all those on it, thank you for the work that they do and the time, and obviously, it has been daunting and challenging in order to try to still get the word out and be engaged with the community. But I think you folks are doing that, and thanks to those that spoke who also are on the radio, who are assisting in that as well. So on behalf of the council, thank you for the time and your efforts, and thank you for being here this evening and presenting the update from the Community Preparedness Committee.
Thank you, thank you. I do have one comment to make. A few things are opening, you know, since we can't, we can't sit at the table in various places because everything's closed. A few things are opening up, the senior center, for one, the library is open at a limited scale. And so since we can't visit anybody, really, we've been putting, putting flyers up, a couple, some of these places all over town. SMC alert flyers, one. And there's a flyer that describes what to have in your go-bag. And so we put some out at city hall, right here. Senior Center, the rec center at their new location. Shelter Creek, we do it there, and Peninsula Place, we've also put some flyers there. So even though people can't see it, when they come in the door, they'll see the flyer and hopefully they'll pick it up and get some good information out of it. So that's about the best we can do at this point.
We understand, and again, appreciate it, and thank you for being there this evening. With that, we're going to move on under announcements and presentations. I think it'd be appropriate just to go to D next with, since with the prior presentation. And that's issuing a proclamation declaring October 3rd through the 9th of 2021 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of San Bruno. There's a lot of whereas's and this and that, and There's a lot of whereas's and this and that, and, and really, what, what I am going to do is, you know, the traditional now, therefore, I Rico, uh, you Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, proclaim Fire Prevention Week, October third through the ninth, which the motto is learn the sounds of fire safety. But more importantly, I think it's an opportunity for us as a community council to really, uh, thank all the first responders, the firefighters, and our team from the San Bruno Fire who have been dispatched along with many others in this county and other counties up and down the state. It has been a very challenging year and it seems where you would say this last year, you come into this year and it's even more challenging. So instead of a lot of those, I think I just want to offer thanks and appreciation to our fire department and the staff and what, uh, and what they're doing for the state and, and for us. And in that, I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief.
Right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Ari Dela, your fire chief. And, uh, thank you for the kind words in regards to our first responders. And, um, we wanted to make sure we recognize, uh, Fire Prevention Week, uh, October third through the ninth, uh, this year. This is NFPA and the Fire Service's signature Fire Prevention Awareness Event. And it's the oldest continuous-running U.S. Public Health Observance in, in the nation that was launched in nineteen twenty-two. So it's an important, uh, an important event that's been going on for quite some time. Uh, if I can have the next slide, please. Oh, you got it. The theme for this year, every year that NFPA or the National Fire Protection Association has a theme for their Fire Prevention Week. And this year's theme is learn the sounds of fire safety. And I'll give you, um, uh, some, if I can have the next slide, please. There's five elements. They want to have the key messages for us for learning the sound of fire safety. Is when a smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm sounds, uh, we want people to respond immediately by exiting their home as quickly as possible. The second bullet point is if your alarm begins to chirp, it may be, mean that the batteries are running low and we need to replace them. And if it continues to chirp after the batteries are replaced, uh, um, or your alarm is more than ten years old, it's time to replace them. So that's an important component. Thirdly, they want you to test all of our smoke and CO2 alarms monthly and by using that test button to make sure the alarm is working. Fourth is if there's someone in your household who is deaf or hard of hearing, and this is one of the important pieces of that same theme I talked about earlier. Install a bed shaker or strobe alarms or lights that can alert a person to a fire. And extremely important for someone who is impaired. And lastly, know the difference between the sound of a smoke alarm and a carbon monoxide alarm. The industry standard is for a smoke alarm to beep three times and, uh, a carbon monoxide detector to beep four times when they do have those alarms. Next slide here is, this is, it rolls right into this NFPA theme for Fire Prevention Week. It rolls right into our sixty-seventh annual San Bruno Fire Department Poster Contest. This is a contest that we've had with Allen School, Belair School, the Highland School, John Muir, Portola, Rollingwood, and St. Robert's School. This is an annual program that started, uh, if I can get the next slide, in nineteen fifty-four. If you see that on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that's an article from the nineteen fifty-four, uh, newspaper announcing the winners of our San Bruno Fire Poster Contest. And that was the first annual awards, uh, that were ever done. So, uh, the flyers, uh, and rules and regulations and everything for the poster contest have been distributed to all the schools by Chief Slice and the Fire Prevention Division. And, uh, basically, uh, at the end of it, on October third through the ninth, certificates, uh, of, uh, participation in merit and ribbons will also be presented to the winners of the, winners of the poster contest at the assemblies at the participating schools. I get the next slide? This is just an example of, uh, the process we go through when we announce, uh, the winners and do the presentation, uh, for Fire Prevention Week and the poster contest on an annual basis. And again, uh, October third through the ninth, they will be presenting the awards. If I can get the next slide, please. This is just, uh, a quick, uh, copy of the web address. If anybody is interested in further information on Fire Prevention Week, www.nfp.org forward slash FPW for Fire Prevention Week. And with that, this conclusion, and, uh, have any questions for me, be more, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, chief. Are there any, uh, questions or, um, from the council? Okay, not seeing any. Um, then, uh, chief. And, and, uh, I see that, uh, Fire Marshal, I believe, uh, Gage is in the room. But to the Fire Marshal, thank you for your work with the Community Preparedness Committee. And then also, chief, thank you for your presentation. Then again, on behalf of the council, our thanks to, uh, everybody, um, for all the work that they do and with our strike teams and our, our thoughts are, are with all of them when they, um, when they, when they depart. And then, um, we think about them until they return. So again, thank you. And with that, we will move on to item number C, which is the update on the Recreation Aquatic Center Constructive, City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council, uh, and members of the public. Javon Groban, City Manager, uh, and the presentation I have, uh, now is just to give the city council and the public a brief update on the, uh, development of our lovely Aquatic and Recreation Center. And so the agenda is, um, uh, to set the objective for tonight. We're going to go over, um, the, the groundbreaking ceremony where we had an amazing battle with the community. Talk about the communications plan, uh, which the city council asked for a presentation on that, uh, next steps and then questions. So, uh, again, uh, want to begin with the general overview of the project. We know that we've talked about it, uh, for a lot, and there's so much anticipation on our community. But we'll just give a quick summary of what's going to be in this new amazing building. Want to also talk about the regular flow of, of information to the community and the council and the next milestones. So, uh, first off, the, uh, new facility will be just under fifty thousand square feet. The building components, uh, are, are listed here and I'll run through them really quick. The first is a year-round aquatic center, uh, both an indoor and an outdoor pool with leisure and lap swim, as well as two party rooms, a indoor gymnasium with a, a track that rings around, uh, the top. High school regulation courts that can also be divisible, uh, and utilized for other sports. Uh, classrooms for lifelong learning, uh, that are also divisible, uh, and available for meetings and enrichment. Uh, a, a community hall, large gathering space, uh, a, a mental space that also includes a catering kitchen, uh, and then a, a fitness area, uh, for fitness equipment, uh, day and school exercises. Uh, in our construction, uh, we had a groundbreaking, um, just a few weeks ago. And so the, the, the construction fences went up, uh, and so September of this year through fall of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and so why don't we begin by introducing the team? And there, there, there's a, a few people that I want to introduce, uh, to the city council, um, to, to a glimmer here tonight. The first person is, uh, who we affectionately, uh, uh, call Rod, uh, but, uh, Rod McCray. He is the city's pro- project manager for the project. He will handle all management responsibilities related, uh, to the project, uh, from the, from, from the beginning part, beginning in, uh, this month and September through the completion. And really serves as the city's primary representative to both the construction manager, uh, and the contractor. He will be the primary person, uh, providing the city council and the community and our advisory, uh, bodies with updates. So, uh, Rod is here today. Uh, Rod comes to us, uh, with a wealth of experience. Last of which, he was a, a principal civil engineer, uh, for the city of Mountain View and completed various, uh, uh, community-facing projects. And so we're, we're excited to have him on the city's team of our project manager, uh, for this development. Uh, construction manager, uh, many members of council have met George Shannon, uh, different structures. But the construction manager really served as a primary liaison to the contractor with the chief, uh, responsibility of ensuring that the project is built, uh, to the designated, uh, standards and importance with all the required permits, plans, specifications, and regulatory requirements. Uh, George is a, a very key individual, uh, of, of the team that is working on behalf of the city, uh, with the contractor. And our contractors, uh, Lethar Construction, they're the general contractor in charge of day-to-day operations and all construction, uh, activity and management of subcontracted, uh, sub, and all subcontractors. And, um, uh, Patrick, uh, Oflattery, uh, is the project superintendent for Lethar Construction, uh, who, uh, will be supporting this project. Our groundbreaking ceremony, as I mentioned, was, was just a few weeks ago on August twenty-seventh. Uh, it was right before the very last concert in the park, an amazing day. Uh, all of council was, was there, hundreds of members of, of the community was there. And we celebrated, uh, turning over dirt and the official launch of this project. Such a wonderful day, um, and, uh, really had a number of displays out so the community could, uh, both watch videos and a, a fly-through of the building, uh, as well as, uh, visual displays throughout the park. We came to this plan, uh, that, that the city council asked for. And so we'll, we'll talk about a number of components and then, uh, of course, answer any questions from the city council. Uh, and so, uh, the construction sign, uh, will be going up over the next week. It is a four-by-four size, uh, consistent with standard practices and the, and the city council's request. There will be direct contact information on, uh, the construction site, uh, phone numbers for, uh, all of the three primary individuals, the construction manager, the city's project manager, as well as the superintendent for the construction firm. Uh, and we will also have the, uh, webs, the, the website available, uh, on the side for people to, uh, get to the website and, uh, and, and get a host of information. So, uh, regular updates. And so there, there'll be a number of public meetings, uh, that will receive, um, uh, will be given to the public in various bodies. So, uh, first off, we wanted to talk about, uh, the city's plan for regular recurring public monthly updates. And so as the, as the city council knows, there is an advisory committee, uh, that has been supporting this project. That advisory committee is really made up of, wow, two individuals, uh, from the city council, two individuals from the planning commission, two individuals from the Park and Recreation Commission, and, uh, two individuals from the San Bruno Community Foundation, uh, that is providing a fifty mil, a fifty million dollar grant to support the cost of, of, of this facility. And so that is a, uh, eight-person, uh, advisory committee and also supported by a host of staff. Uh, those meetings, uh, will become public meetings. Uh, we will agendize them. They will be, uh, uh, streamed on Zoom and, and should we go in person? Uh, they will, they, uh, the public will be able to attend in person. The lead presenter will be Rod, our project manager, George Shannon, uh, the construction manager. Key staff will be present, as well as, um, we have, uh, secured the attendance of the contractor to attend those meetings, uh, virtually. And so those meetings will begin in October of two thousand and twenty-one, so beginning next month. And the target time that, that we pick for these meetings is for these public meetings to occur actually right before our regular, uh, public Park and Recreation Commission. Uh, and so, um, we are looking at a start time of approximately, um, five-thirty on the, uh, third Wednesday of every month. And so we will get, get that information out to the community. Uh, and, uh, we know that the city council had a desire to have the, have the contractor be available at a public meeting. Uh, our, our recommendation and the communication plan is to have that at the advisory committee meeting, uh, where, where if any member of the public does have an issue, uh, they can come to that public meeting and really, uh, have a meeting to address it, sort of the lowest level poss- possible versus, um, uh, having, uh, that request go directly to the city council meeting. Uh, and so those will be, again, public meetings, uh, open to the public on a monthly basis every third Wednesday. Uh, next, quarterly project updates to the city council, uh, beginning on a quarterly basis, uh, December, March, June, September. Quarterly updates, uh, and these are presentations, uh, public presentations that, at public meetings, um, at the San Bruno Community Foundation on January, April, July, and October. Those will be led by the city's project manager. And then a host of other communications. So, uh, a monthly written communication, uh, to the city council that will be provided uh, and, and developed by both the project manager and the construction manager, uh, sort of an industry standard, uh, practice that, uh, both our project manager and construction manager, uh, which will do. Uh, monthly website updates that we will push out, uh, on the website to have, um, current information if any member of the public wants to go, uh, on, on the website. Uh, we are also, uh, in the process of, of acquiring a live time-lapse camera feed that will provide real-time images twenty-four-seven. Uh, and so that, that camera feed will be, um, uh, will, will arrive here, uh, in the next week and, and, and go up and, and provide those, those live camera feeds. Uh, responses to the public, and so, uh, any member of the public that has a question, uh, again, can contact, uh, the project manager, um, and, or, they could actually contact the project manager, the construction manager, uh, or a representative from the construction firm. But we really designated the city's project manager to be the city's point person to ensure that any inquiry from the public, uh, receives a, a timely response. Weekly notices, all, all the required, uh, road closure notices or, or notifications, uh, to, to neighbors will occur on a weekly basis. As we know with construction, uh, there will be times when the, the road network is impacted. This project does include a realignment of State Parkway. Uh, and so, uh, as those road closures, uh, come up, there will be notifications to the neighbors. Uh, and regular communications, um, uh, as needed on our website, posts to social media, uh, and, and on Channel One. We're currently in the process of, of redesigning the, the project website. There is an actual project website. Uh, but we are in the process of redesigning that to a more construction-focused website that of course will have links to all the documentation and, and, and presentations that have, uh, happened to date. But, but we're refocusing, uh, the website to be, uh, construction-focused to provide that sort of primary resource of what's happening now, uh, to the community. Next step, so, uh, during the month of September, uh, what can the public expect? And so the construction fence, as any of you have been over there, is now installed and, uh, the, the, the area is cordoned off. Uh, there's mobilization, uh, of, of the site occurring, including, uh, the, the delivery of construction trailers. Uh, there, there are a number of trees that need to be removed. Uh, that process will be happening, uh, in September. Uh, there's a number of, of abatement, uh, efforts that are needed as we prepare for, for demolition and the pre-demolition preparation. Uh, and the demolition of the facilities, um, will begin, uh, in the latter part of September. Uh, the public should not expect a big wrecking ball, uh, that only happens in the movies nowadays. Uh, uh, but it, it will be a very, uh, facilitated process, but that will begin toward the end of, of, of September. Uh, and they'll begin shoring up, uh, areas on the site, uh, and there's a number of, of hillside work that needs to be done. Uh, and so follow us, uh, of course, on all the, uh, city's social media accounts and, and, uh, uh, our communications team and the project manager, uh, manager will begin to actively push out information, uh, related to the project. Uh, and so with that, that concludes the brief presentation. We know the council was interested in, uh, the, the various components of the communication plan. And so we wanted to, to, to that, to the city council. Thank you.
And thank you for the update and the presentation. If there are comments from the, uh, community or, uh, council members, and if you could, uh, raise your virtual hand now. And we'll start with Councilmember Mason.
I just wanted to, um, thank the city manager for the update. And that, while I appreciate the advisory committee being more accessible to the public, I still do want to reiterate the original request that this be a monthly update provided directly to the council. Um, I think it's really important that we are overseeing what's happening, especially because the expenditures are, um, at this point, potentially going up, given the cost of materials and that those requests will likely have to come back to us if we're not within the fifty million dollars. Um, in addition to that, we were informed that we would be, uh, informed of all change orders and those may happen on a monthly basis. So while I think it's great and I, I would support the continuation of the advisory committee, um, they've been, you know, meeting for years. I, I do think that it's really important at this point that the updates do come directly from, uh, from the contractor, preferably, but to the council and that, as I stated before, they don't have to be long, uh, but that they do need to be updates. And the other, um, request I did want to make is also that we, and, and I, I just want to make a want to make a point about that, too, is that if there are issues that come up at advisory committee that may need, um, some kind of an immediate decision or discussion, we'd have to wait to agendize it just to discuss it, uh, much less make any decision. So I, I do just want to stick to the original request of a monthly update to the full council and where we are. And I did want to also ask that we be provided a timeline as soon as possible on the phasing, uh, what, you know, what are the phase, what do the phases look like, um, and what is the timeline within each one of those phases? And I think, let me make sure there's nothing else in my notes. I think that's it. Um, and, uh, the, I think, oh, I see, okay, sorry, I had another note here. I also wanted to ask when we'd be presented with the business plan for the rack. Um, I know that we've, I know that one has been presented, but when it would be publicly presented, so that the public is aware of what the plan looks like and what the plans are to keep the, um, the rack op- operating. Um, and then lastly, on a, on a note, is just thanking all of the staff who worked on the groundbreaking, it was very well done, um, and the amount of work that probably went into coordinating with so many different individuals that were invited to the event probably was a significant amount of time and work. So thank you to the staff, it was really quite beautiful.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank, thank you for that presentation, City Manager Rogan. Would, is the email gonna be provided on that bulletin board? Sometimes it, it, it's a lot easier to send an email than to call people. So that's my first question. Uh, making sure that we do have a frequent, frequently asked question, um, FAQ on the website, um, so that people could kind of, um, be given what questions that, that are out there. If, if, a quick reminder on what's being salvaged from, from the rec center. And, um, just clarifying on, uh, Council, Councilwoman Mason's updates, uh, we are getting those in writing, monthly, and the, the, the presentation to council is quarterly, wanted to make sure I got that right. And, um, I also support obtaining a copy of the construction schedule, it is my understanding that the, uh, contractor does provide a, uh, a, a construction schedule, um, and it's updated quite frequently, so it'd be great to have that, um, if not, some, some form of that, um, on the website. And of course, the business plan, we do have a document, but we do not have any, um, pricing yet on what these facilities would be operating on. So those are my questions and comments, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What I'm gonna do at this time, um, between Councilmember Mason and Vice Mayor Medina, City Manager, there were, uh, a few questions, and so maybe we can address those. I want to certainly give Councilmember Hamilton and then, uh, Councilmember Salazar an opportunity, then we can circle back around with the council again.
Sure, um, let me begin with, uh, Councilmember Mason's, uh, questions, uh, there was a, a number there, um, with regard to the construction schedule, uh, both Councilmember Mason and Councilmember Medina. Absolutely, uh, both of, uh, the project manager and the construction manager are meeting with the contractor and they are fine tuning, uh, the, the timeline and the work that, uh, will be happening in these phases, and that information will be published on the website. It will be a part of the status report and, uh, and, and, and updated, uh, monthly as appropriate, uh, and you will certainly receive that both in written form and, uh, when the presentations occur. Uh, the, the, all the recommendations about, uh, things to have on the website, um, the schedule, uh, FAQs, um, uh, we, we, we will, uh, address those, um, and I, I believe all of those are intended, uh, already to be on the website or, or are, are already on there. Uh, with regard to what is being salvaged, uh, we will include that, um, in the, in the first, um, monthly report, I don't wanna, we, we, we did prepare to answer that question. I know a lot of people have asked, uh, is the floor being salvaged? Yes, as a part of the, um, the contract, uh, the, the, uh, general contractor does have a subcontractor that is a salvage contractor, and so they will be going in and, and salvaging, uh, materials, and we can provide a list of those. Uh, with regard to the monthly meetings, uh, absolutely, we do understand that Councilmember Mason made a request to have the, the contractor at a monthly, uh, city council meeting, uh, in looking at, and what's sort of normal, uh, and, and commonplace, and sort of ensuring that we have the, the right amount of meetings, but not having a, a monthly council, uh, updated, monthly, a rack update and, 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 um, and all of the monthly reports. It is our professional recommendation, uh, that a, the staggered approach that we outlined, which is a monthly advisory committee meeting that includes eight, eight members, two members of the city council, two members of the planning commission, two members of the park and recreation commission, and two members of the foundation, meet monthly, uh, where the contractor, as well as the project manager, construction manager will be there. The city council and the public will receive a written public work, uh, update that will be on the website. Uh, in addition, there will be quarterly updates, uh, both at the city council, um, and at the, um, San Bruno Community Foundation. Uh, Councilmember Mason, uh, mentioned a number of potential actions that would need to be agendized, uh, whether those things be agendized or happen is sort of different from any monthly update, uh, you can't make a decision, uh, at a monthly update if it's not agendized, and so if we do have an item that needs to be agendized, we will agendize that absolutely, uh, and bring that, uh, to the, to the appropriate body, so, uh, no worries and, um, concern that we will not, uh, be able to break those to the council, uh, in a timely fashion.
Just, if, uh, City Manager, if, if I could, there was also, uh, the business plan, which both, uh, uh, Vice Mayor and Councilmember brought up, um, as well as change order.
Right, so, um, we, we've committed to inform the city council of, of change orders, that, that's our normal customary process, we will do that. Uh, with regards to the business plan, um, staff is working on that, council knows that there was a, um, uh, positional request that, uh, that, that was not approved to help with that, uh, we are looking at when to bring that back to the city council. A number of the, the, um, comments of that the city council made at that time was, let's sort of get through with the groundbreaking and, uh, and, and launch the project before we, we, we look at that position. Uh, but staff, uh, it, it is on their work plan, uh, as we mentioned before, the, the main effort, uh, frankly, to date, has been working on getting the building permitted and working on bringing the contractors on board, and then, uh, staff will be dev- devoting, uh, time to returning to the business plan and bringing, uh, recommendations and actions, uh, before the city council, you do have that written report, but there is an implementation action plan that goes with that, uh, that, that is still a work product that, uh, staff will need to get to. Um, and, and so that, that will happen, uh, resources, of, of course, are a significant issue. Uh, there was also a question about putting the email address on, uh, the, uh, construction sign, uh, I don't have an answer for that, but we'll talk about that with the team.
Okay, thank you, uh, we have, uh, I'm gonna turn to the, uh, public, but I wanted to check in with Councilmember Hamilton and Salazar, if anything, at this moment with questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but, uh, you know, I'll, uh, uh, chime in with everyone else saying, you know, this is exciting to have this project, uh, starting up and, uh, really appreciate the update.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Uh, well, ditto my colleagues' comments on that, but I have no additional questions at this time.
Thank you. Um, we do have a member of the public, uh, with questions or comments, if we could, uh, bring him in at this time, and anybody else from the public, this would be the time to raise your hand, uh, because we're gonna bring it back to council after.
Good evening, can you hear me? Yeah, I, I just got two questions, is, um, the new, uh, center, is that gonna have the same amount of employees that, that we had at the old center? And if not, will the costs that are gonna be in this business plan cover any new staffing? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. City Manager, do you have, um, I know that's in the business plan, if, if I'm correct, which I know we're, we're still working on.
So, so the, the business plan does have a recommended, uh, organizational structure as well as, uh, costs, both a cost structure and a revenue structure as part of that. There's a business plan and, and then there's sort of the work that needs to be done as we march to opening day, uh, and putting together the implementation action plan. Uh, and so, yeah, yes, the, uh, the, at a high level, the answers to, uh, the com- uh, community members, uh, questions, yes, they are incorporated in the business plan. Will there need to be additional and augmented staffing? Yes. Uh, does the business plan have a revenue structure that covers that? Yes. Uh, when we talk about staffing of the, of our community services division, that is sort of a longer conversation, uh, that we, um, sort of don't have time, uh, to go into now, that, that is really a, a, a part of that, uh, plan, and, and there, there's a, there's a staffing model that is, uh, laid out very clearly, uh, with, within that business plan, uh, and when we look at the staff that, uh, the department has today, uh, they ac- ac- actually have, uh, less staff than they had two and a half years ago. And so there, there's, there's a number of things, and, and we haven't been running programs, right, for, for, uh, at least a year and a half of those two years, and so there's a number of staffing configurations and, and sort of, there's, there's a new community room that, that, that will provide rental revenue and staffing that and having the maintenance standards, uh, for that, uh, is, is factored into the business plan, that's a level of, of, uh, or an added program that we don't have now, so we certainly have to, have to staff for that program, but there is a, a, a business plan model that has, uh, uh, expenses being covered by the revenue.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna bring it back to the city ca- council, and, uh, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I, I wanted to better understand, um, what the, what the request is to council right now, I know it's, uh, it's under, um, reports, but I'm wondering if you're asking for a majority of council to say that in lieu of a monthly report to the public, it would be the advisory committee that the reports are made to? Because, um, although I made the request, it was supported by a majority of council to have a monthly update to the council. And so this is being, it sounds like this is being proposed as an alternate to the request. Um, and I, you know, I think it's one thing to have a written report, I do think it's another thing to come, uh, to the council with an actual, a presentation, um, that the public can watch, and we make it accessible to, uh, to the public as accessible as possible. And I think most of us know that the council is probably gonna be, um, potentially more well-known than the committees, um, as we just heard from one of our committees, that it's sometimes hard to get attendance, and they've gone out because of social media, but committees don't have the same, um, necessarily social media presence or, you know, invitations to attend meetings, et cetera, as the council may have, so I guess I would just call it outreach. So what I'm really trying to get at is where's the maximum, um, potential for transparency for the public to watch what's happening on a monthly basis for report outs? And I still do believe that that's what the council. Um, I also wanted to ask, what, what authority is the advisory committee taking on, uh, if this should move forward? Um, 'cause up until now, my understanding was that they were assisting with, uh, getting the rack to the groundbreaking, um, so what exactly would this look like and what decisions would be made slash recommendations by the committee?
So, uh, beginning with, uh, the first questions to the mayor, there's another question?
Sorry, City Manager, should I, let me just ask the last question so that they're all together. Um, you did make a comment about the council, um, not approving the hundred ninety-four thousand dollar position, um, this year, and I wanted to make sure that I was clear, 'cause I believe the, um, the rack business plan was already received, and so I'm not, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, um, 'cause what, what I think is being requested is just, um, a clear presentation on what the business plan is, and it appears to already be written, so where, um, I guess where do we need the additional position right now to have a presentation on the business plan?
City Manager, do, do you want me to go, uh, to Councilmember Hamilton, her first question, or did you want to?
Sure, uh, Mon, why don't I provide a, a brief response, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Mason? The agendized item, uh, that we're, uh, uh, dealing with up now is a presentation on the, uh, communication plan, there's not an agendized action, uh, should, uh, the council, uh, did ask staff to come back with a communication plan, there was certainly a request by Councilmember Mason to have the contractor attend a monthly, uh, meeting, uh, and be present at the city council. Staff did express some concerns with that at that time and said, let us go back and develop, uh, a communication plan and present that to you, and that's what we're doing tonight. Uh, that communication plan does not include the request that Councilmember Mason made for the contractor, uh, to come to the city council, uh, and provide a, a monthly update at the council meeting. It does, however, include a monthly, uh, update report to the city council, as well as the public, um, and a monthly present, uh, presentation, uh, public at the rack advisory committee that includes eight members of, 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 um, various bodies, uh, in the community. It is staff's professional recommendation that, that that is the appropriate, uh, venue for the contractor to be present at, uh, with the goal of, uh, to, to address any issues that, on a monthly basis, at the, at the lowest level possible, and, and as we said, that, um, there will absolutely be transparent communication, there's contact information uh, on the sign, uh, there will be social media posts, there will be ways that people, if they have a concern, can reach out and actually get that concern addressed than having to come, uh, at a public comment, uh, at a city council meeting. And we do have a project manager that has managed, uh, a, 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 a host of public projects that can, uh, o- o- pine on what is normal, uh, and, and commonplace and, and, and what actually works for an efficient, uh, well, well, uh, project. Uh, with regards to the business plan, uh, absolutely, uh, what I articulated was that, um, at budget time, staff did request the rest of the addition of a position that was actually a restoration of another position, it was not a meant new position, uh, to the department, um, but that position was to support, it was a deputy director position that is included within the business plan, uh, and would support the development of all the work that needs to happen during the two-year construction cycle, as well as into the new facility. And so, uh, because that position was not approved, that workload still needs to be done, recognize that, uh, and staff will do that, um, as I mentioned, to, to council on numerous occasions. Staff's primary focus up until this point has been project management of the project to get the permits approved and to get groundbreaking, and now that we've accomplished that, we intend to return to the business plan with the staffing and the resources we have. That does not mean that, that will be the only resources that we have, we will, um, again, return to the city council, uh, with, um, a presentation of the organizational structure as well as the staffing, uh, to operate the facility. With, I think that, that concludes my response to Councilmember Mason's questions.
Thank you, City Manager, uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
So, um, I, I mean, I like the idea of having the, the, the subcommittee or the, 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 advisory committee meetings and having, um, the public and have an opportunity to engage with the folks at the lowest level, as, as was said. But I, I do share a concern that, you know, it, there's, there's, there's two members of, of the city council on that advisory committee, but there's three that are not. And for the three that are not, there would be no avenue for asking questions, because it would be inappropriate for us to, for the other three members to attend the, uh, advisory meeting and participate in it in any way. So the, might I offer as a, as perhaps a compromise, is i- i- in addition to, to what's listed in the communication plan, perhaps just have staff provide a, um, summary once a month of what was presented at the advisory committee to the full council? Um, and that would give the, the rest of us an opportunity to, to ask questions, I would, it wouldn't be a, I don't think we would have time during our meetings to do a full rehash of everything that happened at that advisory, um, um, committee meeting, but just, you know, it would be a, almost like a report app. Uh, this, you know, this is what was discussed, there were, there were concerns from the, from the public about X, Y, and Z, those were addressed, um, and, and then, you know, the, the meat of the, of what was, what was, you know, presented at the, um, at the, uh, advisory committee, and the rest of it can just be in the packet for our, for our, um, for our education. Just offering that as a potential compromise.
Thank you, Councilmember, any other, uh, comments or questions from, uh, colleagues on this, on the topic or discussion? Thank you, Councilmember. Any other, uh, comments or questions from, uh, colleagues on this, on the topic or discussion?
Well, can I get an answer on whether that's feasible?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Or, or that, that's, it could even be considered, anything?
City Manager, I, I'm gonna, um, sorry to bring this into, on this again, but, um, what, what are, what are your thoughts on what Councilmember Hamilton said? A- as, as the city manager's, uh, get, getting ready or gonna turn off his, turn on his mic, I, I would say, you know, um, what I think is most critical and important is that issues don't wait, is, I shouldn't say issues, concerns or information to the community doesn't wait a month. That's why at the lowest level, there's those phone numbers and websites and that they can contact immediate. Not to wait, because if I have to wait three weeks to be able to say, I have a concern and I live nearby, I think that would be a challenge to me. Um, I know, uh, as some, some in the community may not know, but, uh, each council member and the city manager have a one-on-one, which certainly things can be updated and/or concerns can be raised too, so those can be brought forward. Um, so I do feel that it, what the ask was, was to have, uh, an availability for the community and the public to kinda, to have those interests to be updated on that, but as well as to have that opportunity to ask more of those detailed questions as the last speaker did.
Oh, sure. Um, I, I was looking for Rod, the city's project manager, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for interrupting. If he's still looking, if our city manager's still looking for him, I was gonna propose that, look, the first meeting is gonna be Zoom, I'm presuming. So let's proceed with the plan to go forward as proposed as we get more information when we do meet in person. Because currently, if it's gonna, if we're gonna be meeting in Zoom, then all council could watch that Zoom meeting after it's recorded. And then, um, we can kinda go forward from there, because it, it is, it is, um, and I'm relying on my construction experience, it is, it is a lot of additional work. Um, I think we have plenty of update time with the proposal. Um, I don't see too much of an improvement in, in, in that information by having the construction manager there at council every month. We're, we are getting a copy of the report, and we're also have access to seeing the, um, the committee, uh, meeting. Now, if something is not correct in, in, in that assumption or what I heard, then, then I, I would change my mind, but I think we have pretty good coverage.
And, and I would say, cause I think, yeah, please, Councilmember, please.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt you. Um, you know, Mayor, I just wanna just quickly reiterate though, my, my suggestion was not that the construction manager provide that update, that a, a member of city staff would provide a, a recap of the, of the previous advisory meeting, and then that, then that item would be on the agenda, and it would give the rest of us an opportunity to, um, to ask a question or, or whatever. Um, cause I'm, I'm, I'm also understanding the, the, you know, from the timing issue, you know, paying people to be after hours, all those types of things that, that are, you know, additional challenges to having, um, that, that full meeting take place during a council meeting. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I was looking for Rod, and I do not, um, see him in the attendees or, uh, unfortunately at this time. And, and I just, and then we're gonna go to the city manager, and I did wanna say that Councilmember Mason asked about the, uh, the advisory committee, you know, what is, I think the question was like, what authority do they have? I think she said it nicer. But, um, uh, i- it has none, because it obviously does not have a majority of any body. Um, and things all, um, from theirs had gone to Park and Rec, had gone to the foundation, had gone to the city council. And then the city council obviously makes the, uh, approvals, um, on, on those expenditures and items. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, absolutely. With regard to the advisory committee, they, they are advisory. Again, a update, a agendized update at the city council, uh, is not an opportunity to make a decision. So should there need to be a decision made, that one needs to be agendized appropriately at the city council, whether there is a agendized update on the city council on a monthly basis or not. With regard to, uh, providing a monthly update, uh, on the project at a city council meeting, uh, my professional recommendation would be that if we do that, it is the city's project manager, uh, that do that uh, versus, uh, having a staff person then take on that, because the, the, the knowledge transfer and then being able to respond to whatever questions the city council has, I wouldn't wanna sort of have, have a gap in, in, and, and have a staff member not be able to answer the question. The, the city's day-to-day point person in liaison to the contractor and the contract manager or project manager, that is the person that is gonna provide all of the, all the updates to all of the various bodies. That person is also the person that will respond to constituent questions as well as any question that the council member has. So absolutely, council members can ask the city manager a question, but just like the, uh, public can reach out to the project manager, the, the, the city council can reach out, uh, to the project manager. And I, I don't want you to think that because there's not a forum at your agendized business meetings every month, that there's not a way that if you have a question to, to, um, to, to get the answer. Um, what the communication plan that was developed, it was developed in order to provide transparency, provide written reports to the public, have social media posts on a regular recurring basis, a monthly, uh, uh, report to the pub, to the, to the city council, and a forum where there is a monthly public meeting that anyone can come to, uh, to, to, to hear about what's going on or to ask any questions. If the city council would also like to have that at one of your two monthly business meetings, we can plan for that conversation, book the time, and, and, and have that. My recommendation would be that if we do that, we bring the resource that has the, the information to respond to any questions you have, and that's the city's project manager.
And I did see that, uh, uh, Rod is back, um, with us just as an FYI. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
All right. So I'll, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll try one last compromise. Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm hearing all the, I'm hearing all the feedback, and I understand it. What if, once a month, under, and, under announcements and presentations, there's a reminder for folks about the monthly advisory meeting upcoming? Then people know, so those, those members of the public, and there are many who come only to this meeting to get their information about the city, that we're at least once a month reminding people that the advisory, um, committee is meeting, that they have the, that they have the, the ability to attend those meetings and ask, ask questions directly, and also provide the, the other, um, communication, um, uh, uh, avenues that are, that are listed on the sign. That would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't even change month to month.
Uh, Councilmember Hamilton, um, this is an important project to the community. Uh, and as, as things start to evolve, I think people have more interest, just like what are you salvaging? You would think people were saying, but I mean, they're sentimental. There's, uh, folks just wanna know. Um, I think that being able to, under, uh, presentations and announcements, to announce, uh, the meeting and the avenues of which, always to remind folks, uh, where they can. Because again, my, my objective would be to address things, uh, quickly and not wait. Um, because then they just become more challenging and frustrating. So, um, yeah, with just it having a pres- uh, announcement at, of the upcoming meeting, uh, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh, Councilmember Mason, and then, um, I'm gonna hear if there's anything else from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Salazar, so we can, uh, move on, uh, getting to consent, please, uh, Councilmember.
I, I'm, uh, I would just reiterate the importance of this coming to the council. I appreciate staff's time and the recommendation. Um, but I do wanna say at the end of the day, if we go over $50 million, it's the five of us that will be asked to make that decision. Um, that's, and, um, and we will be asked to approve anything over $50 million. And so I do think it's important that it be coming to the, uh, council. And, um, as far as, again, transparency, I understand that we will be getting a monthly report, but a lot of this is not so much about what we're getting and what we can read via email or on the website. But for those, um, members of the public who are watching our meetings, what they too are able to see at our city council meetings. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor, your mic is on. Did you wish to speak?
Understood. I, I, I just wanna make sure that when we start having these meetings, which there's, there's gonna be one next month, and it will be via Zoom, and it will be recorded, and so anybody could, could, all of us could watch it. And the public is invited to attend the meeting, if that's correct, and they could submit the questions in advance so that it can be answered. And with the FAQ on the website, I think we're gonna have a pretty good coverage of questions.
Understood. Uh, City Manager, you wanna?
Thank you. We, we can certainly include it as a, uh, monthly announcement. The, the one thing that, uh, staff reminded me of is, um, at the advisory committee meeting, it's actually a, a, a form that's better to uh, delve down into an issue that may be raised and, and addressed and versus sort of it'd be just a presentation at a business meeting where the public can make a comment and there can be that dialogue. A sort of having it at the committee level actually allows a better format, uh, and, and more time for, for those issues to be talked about and maybe, uh, an appropriate response given, uh, at that time. So just wanted to make that point. But, but absolutely, we can, uh, include an announcement on the agenda, uh, of, uh, where the, the monthly, uh, uh, presentation updates will be, uh, as well as all of the other, um, avenues that are talked about.
Okay, thank you for the, uh, the feedback on that. Last thing about being able to dive more, uh, as well. Um, okay, uh, colleagues, do we have a somewhat of a concurrence from some of us? Or that, um, the presentation that the manager has made is fine with the addition of announcing it with under presentations and announcements of the, um, advisory meeting, and again, the other communication outlets that residents have immediately, um, you know, via phone, email, et cetera. For now, obviously, everything can be modified later. Councilmember Hamilton?
This is an announcement and presentation, so there's, we can't, we can't recommend anything anyway. So it's, I don't think it matters.
Well, was it within the presentation, but, okay. Uh, it's, well, with Councilmember Hamilton's comment, then is it, uh, City Manager, do you have enough information from us, or what I, what I don't wanna see is that we're leaving here and, and City Manager saying, well, okay, I, I've heard a multitude of things, so I'm not sure what we're saying. Uh, City Manager? He gave us a presentation of what, what he was wishing for, for the communications plan, which was asked to come back to us, but maybe there's clarity, clarity from the city attorney that needs to be had.
I, I think direction and the desire of the city council is clear. Uh, we'll, we'll proceed with the communication plan with the addition of, of adding a, uh, on, on the announcement at the monthly city council meetings, um, the information about of the advisory, uh, committee meetings and, uh, uh, proceed forward. Uh, there were a number of, of questions asked, uh, with regard to information that's gonna be on the website. We, we noted those. Uh, and then I believe Councilmember Medina, uh, asked a question with regard to, um, what information will, will, will be salvaged, and we will, uh, in, include that in a subsequent update as well as provide the city council with, uh, the, the calendar information, uh, and a timing on returning to you with the business plan, uh, implementation action plan. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, um, City Manager, for, again, the presentations and the, the questions, and Rod, thank you for, um, uh, standing by and, uh, um, I appreciate that.